I'd like to call the order, Brandywine Heights Area School District's Board Meeting for November 7th. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
And we have two honor rolls of school board service. Mrs. Hune, the first award, it's a from the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents the certificate of appreciation to Mrs. Elizabeth Hune for 12 years of service as a school board member. So congratulations. And then the same certificate goes to Mr. Sheets for also 12 years of service. That is a long time being involved in the school system, sitting on the board. A lot of evenings, a lot of time, a lot of hours. So to both of you, thank you for that. Thank you for bringing stability to this board, to be in a stability factor for me and growing with the district with myself through those years. It's been wonderful. Thank you to both of you. Next up, John. The word muted earlier. I just reminded you.
Okay, I'll check. I think it's working now.
I think we're good now.
Thumbs up, so assuming pay-per-view is working.
Okay. Do you want to turn over to the student board reps so we can?
Yes. All right, we'll turn over to the Student Board Representatives Report. Tatiana?
The high, is it on? The high school hosted Halloween Town Friday, October 28th. Many clubs, including art club, drama club, key club, Spanish club, and student council ran activities for the children. Two weeks ago, the guidance office presented a financial aid night to provide students and families with information concerning available options and strategies to pay for college. This past month, ninth grade students had the opportunity to visit BCTC East and West campuses. The Powderpuff Football Game will be held this Friday, October 11th at 7:00 PM, assuming it doesn't rain. Rain date is yet to be decided. The juniors and seniors have been rigorously practicing for the upcoming event. The BH Clothing Circle will be laying out free clothing in the high school cafeteria this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All 133 bags of clothing have been sorted in preparation for the big day. We will also be collecting clothing on Saturday, December 3rd from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We're accepting all clothing, but specifically sweatshirts, winter clothing, and books for all ages. The Senior Citizens Luncheon will be held on November 17th. This is hosted by Key Club. NHS Induction is tentatively on November 21st at 6:00 PM. And lastly, parent-teacher conferences will take place the week of Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Megan Miller?
In sports for the past month, boys soccer were the Berks County runner-ups after losing the county championship game to Tulpa Hocken 2 to 0. Boys soccer ended their season in district quarterfinals after a tough loss to Greenwood 3 to 1. Their season ended with a record of 17 to 5. Girls soccer ended their season in district quarterfinals as well in a tough loss to Delone Catholic in overtime, 4 to 3. The Lady Bullets ended their season with a record of 11, 7, and 1. Girls volleyball lost to Twin Valley in Berks County Quarterfinals, ending their season with an overall record of 9 to 8. Co-op football with Coates Town ended their season with a tough loss to Beckway Valley 20 to 21, and they also ended their season with a record of 3 to 7. But on a more exciting note, the winter sports season will begin on Friday, November 18th.
Lauren?
On Friday, October 28th, the elementary school celebrated Halloween. Students wore their costumes in the afternoon and participated in a short parade near the school with the intermediate school students, led by the high school band. Following the parade, students played Halloween-related games and activities. On November 3rd, our kindergarten students celebrated the 50th Day of School by having a 50s-themed day. They danced, made root beer floats, and completed activities that involved math counting to 50. On November 18th, we will have our annual Little Shopper's Village from 6 to 8. Families are invited to come out to shop, get pictures with Santa, and visit our book fair and other vendors. All proceeds from the bake sale will be given to help a family in need. Sales from the raffle prizes and gift shop will support our PTC. Parent-teacher conferences will take place on November 18th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. During those days, students will follow an early dismissal schedule.
Thank you. Jenna?
At the middle school, there is a hoodie drive being sponsored by community and schools and the BHMS Student Council. It is November 8th through November 30th. Veterans Day Assembly is November 11th. Students made posters, wrote essays, and made cards. Many of these items can be seen on display in the intermediate and middle school hallways. Spirit Week is 11th through the 17th. Monday is Patriotic Day, Tuesday is Comfy Day, Wednesday is Camo Day, Thursday is Hack Day, and Friday is College Shirt Day. At the Intermediate School, students also participated with the Veterans Day Holiday by making cards, posters, and essays. IS students will have the opportunity to view the Veterans Day Assembly through our live stream. They will also participate in classroom activities to celebrate the day. The PTC will be holding a dining fundraiser in partnership with Vincenzo's in Douglasville. Families can order meals through November 8th, and pickup is on November 9th at the elementary school lobby from 5:30 to 6:00 PM. For more information, you can visit the PTC page. And finally, report cards for the first marking period will go live on Infinite Campus, where parents will have access to them tomorrow, November 8th. Parent-teacher conferences will be held November 18th through the 23rd, and Thanksgiving break is November 24th through the 28th.
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks so much, ladies. Just a couple clarifying questions, points for the community. Just as noted, report cards will go live tomorrow, November 8th, Veterans Day. Anyone who is a veteran is more than welcome to join us. We have Veterans Day in this building, the Intermediate Middle School, on Friday, November 11th. And it's always a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our veterans and have our students connect and learn from our veterans during that day. And then Tatiana, you had shared two dates. If you don't mind just sharing those again with me. Citizens Luncheon?
November 17th.
November 17th is our Citizen Luncheon, and then your clothing drive is this Saturday, correct? At what time?
From 10 to 12.
10 to 12. Great. Thank you for coordinating that again. Awesome. Thank you so much, ladies.
All right, moving on to presentations. Mr. Podiger?
So I will quickly turn this over to Mr. Volker to do some introductions. But as part of our own ongoing efforts to evaluate our curriculum, evaluate our academic program, we partnered with the BCIU this year to do an audit of our math program. And Dr. Hoyt has joined us this evening to share some of his findings. He's been in the classrooms evaluating the instructional practices, looking at our curriculum, and putting a lot of things together in terms of what are those areas that we need to focus on, what are those areas we're doing well? And I thought it'd be a good opportunity for the board this evening to hear about those updates and the work that Dr. Hoyt's done with the school district. So thanks for joining us, CD.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, community, ladies and gentlemen on the school board, for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight about my experience with math in the district going back to 2015, but more importantly, to focus on the 2223 school year. Just real quickly, I've spent about 22 years in the field of education and mathematics. I've been a high school math teacher, building administrator, worked in central office as a supervisor of mathematics in a district in Chester County. And I've been at the IU now for the last seven years, where the majority of my role is providing professional development around curriculum instruction and assessment in the area of K to 12 mathematics. So I'm also a parent, so I'm seeing what math is like for a seventh grader and a fourth grader as well. My wife's a teacher, so my whole world is education. So happy to be here with you tonight. My contact information is on here, so if you certainly have any follow-up questions, other things you'd like to know moving forward about the work that I've had the privilege of doing in your district, I'm certainly happy to answer any of those questions. So I started working with the district going back to 2016. At that time, you had moved in the direction of using a program called Envision for the elementary, as well as taking a look at what was happening in the secondary schools for the areas of math in the CIA area. CIA being curriculum instruction and assessment. A lot of that time was helping the teachers learn the ins and outs of Envision, as well as provide a conceptual math framework approach around what people call the new math. It's really not the new math, but we'll call it the new math for the purpose of tonight. But the idea was, is what does math look like? What does it sound like? How can we support our kids? How can we support our parents in all those different areas? I even did a parent workshop in the district going back there. I did a lot of learning walks in the classroom, hand-in-hand with administrators, other classroom teachers, to just provide feedback about some of the best practices that should be occurring. Unfortunately, what happened then is we now have had a two-year break in math instruction. So then the role shifted to providing, what does teaching look like in a virtual world? So that's what I did for pretty much two years after that. But during the summer, the administration approached me and wanted to sit down to provide just an overview and an audit of things that were currently occurring in the district. A lot of the things that we looked at were taking a look at the elementary school and adjustment of time there, secondary use of time in the area of mathematics. How could we better coordinate an MTSS structure to support all students? Taking a look at that multi-tiered system of approach. What other opportunities were out there? Whether they were to provide summer enrichment, summer remediation? How did we assess the students? Could we conduct more walkthroughs in the classroom to give feedback? As well as taking a look at a standards or skill-based report card? These are all things that, in my field that I do, I consult with a lot of districts. I'm doing very similar things with other districts, and they've requested me to do the same thing moving forward. All, a lot of things people are talking about and want to be done. So, you know, when I take a look at the things that this district was attempting to do four or five years ago, really we're ahead of things that perhaps some other districts are now starting to talk about, which is an outstanding thing. From an instructional-focused perspective, you know, when you look at classroom engagement, depth of knowledge, mathematical questioning, that's a lot of feedback I gave in previous years, but that's a lot of the work they're taking a look at now. The biggest impact in math isn't the program, it isn't the resource. It's the teacher and the types of questions and math vocab we use in the classroom. A lot of different resources are being used, and those resources all serve a specific purpose. But those resources are aligned around the things when you, we talked about so many acronyms in education. CRA being one of them, which is a concrete representational approach to mathematics, which is looking at things visually using manipulatives, using models within the classroom, and a focus on problem solving. Those things are occurring within the scope of the classroom, which is also a tremendous positive to see. As well as, if we want to do things better, administration says, what kind of professional development can we do to support our school community in the area of mathematics? For curriculum, the curriculum is standards, and it's aligned to Pennsylvania. Course offerings tailored to that curriculum, which is Pennsylvania state-aligned. There's a scope and sequence that's fair and equitable for all kids in this district. And one of the things that I think is a hallmark here is that financial literacy is a required course for students, which, in my opinion, if I were king of the castle, I would require all students to take financial literacy, just to understand the importance of that content. When you think about other things here, one of the things I think is a tremendous hallmark that I saw in my audit was the data wall that the administration has. I had some time just to walk through and look at that with them. And you could pull up any student in this district and see an entire historical perspective of the individual student from any assessment they've ever taken to map out where do we think they're going to go. And as a student, as an individual, as a cohort, as a subgroup, as a grade level, not very many districts are doing that right now. So that's a tremendous hallmark. Something, as a math guy, I'm a data, a data, I don't spoil myself a guru, but I look at data all day. It's all I do. And to really see that that's occurring right now, students are going to make tremendous strides within here. That allows the district to really look at a very targeted and systematic approach for students. Is this resource working for the kids? Is this unit of study working for the kids? Are these questions working for the kids? How can we tailor the assessments to meet the needs of these kids? Those things are happening, and that's a tremendous, tremendous hallmark right there. When I walked away from this, and you know, they asked me, they said to me, be blunt, be honest. What do you think that we can do better as a district? In my opinion, the best way that people get better in something is by getting feedback. It's not by getting an end-of-the-year evaluation, it's by getting ongoing systemic feedback. So having people coming into the classrooms, not to necessarily evaluate, but just to provide feedback. When you're working with this small group of kids, try and ask these questions. Use this type of language. You know, consider assessing this way. That was definitely something that I would recommend. Don't switch to another primary resource. I will tell you, they cost a lot of money, and there's not a silver bullet right now. There's not a singular math resource right now that's working for anybody. Because if it was, they'd be using it. You know, you could say program XYZ, ABC. Everybody who picked one six years ago is looking to switch, and I'm telling them the same thing. Take what you're currently using and make it better. Make it better. Because all that does is cause a lot of undue stress for kids, teachers, parents, and everyone when it comes to that. So instead of moving away from that primary resource, utilize it. Take a look at the other supplemental resources that are being implemented in the classroom. A lot of those supplementals do have to be used. I don't care what program any district uses, because all of those resources are written to the National Common Core. And in Pennsylvania, we use the PA Core. So there is never a cohesive alignment with that, so you do have to supplement. So what I recommend with that is in taking a look at some of those resources through the K to 12 realm, is to really focus in on those and align those more. Because a lot of those supplemental resources, again, are created by people who may not necessarily work in Pennsylvania. So Teachers Pay Teachers is a very popular one right now. A lot of great things on Teachers Pay Teachers. But a lot of those things are teachers from different states who look at very different standards, skills, assessment anchors, all those things. So instead of using necessarily those resources, take a look at them, how can you make it your own? We all know as human beings, when we make something ourselves, we understand it more. But when we use something from somebody else, we don't have the knowledge base of where that came from all the time. So to me, those are my major recommendations for the districts moving forward. I will be doing a lot more continued work with them, which I'm excited about. I have a great relationship with this district. I really enjoy coming in to see your kids, to see your teachers, do some really wonderful things in the field of mathematics. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for the opportunity to come into this school and this district. It's definitely a district that I do really enjoy coming to, and I've gotten to know a lot of your kids and teachers along the way. So thank you.
So just as a brief wrap-up, I do want to thank Dr. Hoyt every time I have the pleasure of working with him. As he mentioned, this is not his first time here out with the district. I feel as though I learn more, and then the whole team learns more, and we're better as a district because he comes out and visits us. So that is very much appreciated. Just to frame it all up one last time, I feel as a district as though we are 100% headed in the right direction. However, I wanted to make sure that there weren't things that myself, our team, our bigger team is overlooking. And that was one of my biggest fears. We know that math has been a bit of an Achilles' heel for this school district, and we wanted to make sure foundationally we had the structures in place. And from what we've heard so far, and it's ongoing. But it seems as though, from the curriculum, all the way through to the resources, what we need to have in place for our students to be successful is in place. What we want to continue to focus our efforts on is that continual feedback to the teachers. Because again, as Dr. Hoyt mentioned, they are the number-one variable in the classroom. We have great teachers, but everybody can always do better and improve. And that's really where we know we're going to be focusing the rest of our efforts, knowing that the other systems are in place. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
You said about our supplemental resources. Can you just expand on that a moment more? Like, what, what did you recognize in terms of that?
Just to take a look at what they look like. So take a look at the questions that are being asked. Does that type of language match what's being expected on the end of the year if they're taking a PSSA or a Keystone exam? Take a look at the math language per se. Is that matching vocabulary that's being used? A lot of those resources sometimes use, I don't want to use the term kid-friendly, but language that suits the program. So for example, like a program that I used to supervise called Measures of Central Tendency Landmark Numbers. So then kids would go to secondary, and all of a sudden, the middle school teacher's talking about measures of central tendency, but the kids were used to things like landmark numbers, landmark numbers. So it's just making that common language, or said it's more Pennsylvania-specific. But it also, take a look to see, do the questions that are being asked in those supplemental resources, are they more depth-of-knowledge one, where it's more low-level questioning? Can we take some of those things and make them a little bit more higher level, like increase the rigor a little bit?
So when I first heard about supplemental resources, I knew everyone's like, hard to imagine. I mean, how can we change the length of that? I mean, that's a program that's not created by us.
I was saying more of things like, as I was seeing teachers pull in, like different types of worksheets or projects or activities moving in, those things you are subject to the terms that do go within there, and they do correlate to Pennsylvania.
So in your supplemental, those are required, and we are spending a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, when you take a look at any of those tech-based ones that come with a lot of bells and whistles, there's a lot of research and evidence behind those that, that they have a good effect size. I can't speak for the fact that I'm saying that they are a direct evidence-related, but I can say in working with other districts and, you know, other colleagues across the state, you know, that they are showing that those are, what those are showing is that they're helping kids where they're at. So if I'm an eighth-grade student, and I lack the knowledge of ones, tens, and thousands, and I'm now in a lesson where I'm learning about things that are in the millions, billions, that imagined math will help to give some kids more of that little background fill-in to get them where they need to be. So that's a lot of what those things do. It helps to really diagnose where's the child at, so that we can help them to get where they need to go.
And then I have a concern with programs. The balance, right? How much were we using it? And why is it overkill? Why is it, you know, becoming not as effective as we want it to be? Because we are so data-driven, we do want to see that they're making this progress. But in the same regard, is it too much?
I didn't mean to cut you off there. No, and as a parent, I can tell you that too. I have children who, they use a tech-based for some of that independent work. And there are times where I will say to my son, hey, come over here. Let's kind of do this one together, because enough is enough, you know? And listen, and that's where, you know, that's a conversation between the child, the teacher. A lot of those things are ongoing. You know, it's really important. I tell teachers all the time, help to develop math advocates out of these kids. You know, when do you feel enough is enough? Because math anxiety is real. You know, it is a real thing. And, you know, our kids in middle school now have been assessed more than I ever was in my entire life on anything. So, you know, I'm very empathetic to that. So you do have to find that happy balance. And sometimes, you know, especially with screen time, a lot of those things, it is good to step away. Where I do have concerns about, not NIST or CIP, but those resources, and I see it everywhere, is that our kids right now in math are so used to now sitting in front of a computer, and now they're doing all these things and doing all this stuff up here, instead of using the tools that they should tool to use for math, paper, pencil, calculator, all those things out, work things out. So I think that's also a detriment to what's going on, but that's just really been the nature of what's occurred with education because of a lot of them being so tech-driven. So it's finding, it is finding a balance with that. And that's where just those informal check-ins, just like we're talking about, hey, let's give feedback from administrative to the teachers about math instruction. That's one of these things where too, our teachers need to make sure they're giving feedback to the kids and to the parents and vice versa about when is it becoming a stress or a burden? Because that does have an impact on any assessment score. So no, I empathize with you with that. It's just, it's a happy balance.
And that the teachers came to what they feel that they need more support in, or are they sort of them?
Time. Time. Yeah, and that's, you know, and it is, you know, especially now when you look, I mean, you're, the most worried group that the evidence is telling us are our nine and our 10-year-olds. You know, I have a nine-year-old daughter, and I see it in my own evidence that those children now are going into fourth grade, expected to apply and extend and understand fractions with unlike denominators, but yet when you ask them to subtract a problem, they look at you like you have three heads. So absolutely trying to figure out, how can we best meet the needs of, we know where they're at versus where they need to be by the end of fourth grade in March. So, but I mean, they feel very supported. You know, and I've worked with all the administrators in here, that they're very supportive of the teachers and the teachers. I've told them, listen, I'm neutral, I don't work here. Be honest with me. And they all shared that they feel supported. They feel that if they need things, they can get them. They feel like they have great parents. They feel like they have great kids. And I can tell you, you have great kids in this district. You really do. And you have great teachers. So, you know, when you have all those things in place, that's where you can take the things and go from good to great. And that's where I think that you, this district is, from a math perspective, so.
And Ms. Lawrence, if I could add one piece to that, as Dr. Hoyt said about time, the time piece being concerned. Now, recognizing we're coming out of the pandemic, we work through the CNI lens, especially with our elementary and intermediate staff members. What are the things that envision, what are the things that wonders that you want to go back and have supplemental professional development on? Because we've had all the trainings, you've used it, but now things have shifted through the pandemic. So they've identified about four or five topics that were big, broad topics that they would like additional time with. So we've been going through, we've had two professional development sessions already. We've been earmarked where we're re-going over those resources and then giving them that time to work through that as well. Because that time piece is so crucial. And, you know, again, me being a secondary guy, I can't think about how your elementary teachers are planning for six, seven lessons a day. So, you know, giving them... So, you know, giving them that time to do the distribution. So we're working that in as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. I hope you all have a nice Thanksgiving. So.
So as we transition presentation here, uh, I am really excited as a school district, as a superintendent, to be able to have this conversation. And I'll, I'll call it a conversation because it, that's what it is. We're, we're at the point where we have talked about improvements to our facilities, our specifically athletic facilities uh, for many years now, uh, and for the, the first time, I think we're able to really put together where we are financially coupled with what the needs are of our facilities are. And so, uh, what we're gonna do this evening is touch upon, uh, what we're doing with some, some facility now, uh, enhancements. Uh, and specifically, I'm gonna touch upon the background and how we got to this point today. Uh, and then we're going to, from there, transition to, uh, a partner that we have in Keystone Sports Construction, uh, Mr. Sellers, and he's gonna talk through, uh, what that could look like for our school district. And then we'll talk a little bit, some specificity with, uh, our athletic director to talk about what that would look like from, uh, utilization of the field and some scheduling. Uh, and then we'll hear also from Ms. Delguerico, our business manager, to talk a little bit about the financing side of it to understand how do we afford this and, and what are some next steps. So that being said, uh, background. So, um, to start this off, this, again, this has been a multi-year evaluation. Uh, so several years ago, we connected, uh, with our students and started talking about what, where do we want to place emphasis for our facilities? If we're gonna upgrade a, a location, we don't have infinite number of dollars. If we had to stream like that, where would it be? And at that point, the students all said the high school. And I, I believe that still is the case. Uh, without some official survey data to say that, I can anecdotally say that's still the case. So we spent a lot of time last year investigating what would it mean to update our high school stadium. Uh, and we, we really went through a, a deep in-depth process with that. Uh, we looked at the, the current field. We looked at some of the infrastructure in that current field. We look at lighting. We looked at bleachers. We looked at expanding bleachers. We had reps, reps come out to talk to us about expanding the bleacher system. Uh, we, we did a lot of time and investment into that. Um, part of that process was investigating, unfortunately, the way that high school is built. For lack of a better word, landlocks us into a corner of the building and that whole athletic facility is built behind the building with no access to it. So as part of that investigation, we also looked at, how do we get access to the back of that building for our, our grandparents, for our elderly, for our community citizens, for our young families with strollers. There's no really good way to navigate that. So that was part of the whole process to invest in the high school and really do the work at the high school. Uh, unfortunately, the cost came back, uh, pretty, uh, expensive. So uh, I know it's a little hard to see up on the presentation here, but it is, forgive me, cause my eyes are not that good either. Um, it was, I'll walk over here, uh, three point nine million. If we upgraded the facility without doing a turf field. If we did a turf field, that price went up to five point four million. So it really put us in a position where we had to really take a step back and say, we know we have some funds set aside to do facility enhancements, but at this point, that cost is out of what we have available to be able to expend to just put some money into facilities. So uh, it, it forced us to take a look back, step back, reevaluate. How do we then go back and look at maybe reshifting and allocating resources back over to this, this facility? Um, so I wanna be very clear about that because a lot of the misconceptions that are out there in the community right now is we're putting all our emphasis on the middle school because that's where parents want it. Or that's the community wish is to have it up on the field and that's where the, the parents played. And so that's where we should put the money. That's not the case. We did, we put all our effort into putting it over at the, uh, high school. Again, costs just were prohibitive in, in terms of allowing us to be able to do that. So um, again, now we started looking the path of, what does it look like to, to do some enhancements here? Uh, that was, uh, an ongoing process throughout the last spring, the summer, the fall. And as we started to investigate this, it actually, for the first time, felt like it might be attainable to do some work at our syn- to add a synthetic track and to look at even the potential of a turf field. Uh, before financially, it was, it was really out of the, uh, reach for us to be able to do something like that. Um, but the, the initial thought was, can we do something for the community in terms of this, the sender track? Because we have people that use this facility all the time. Uh, people are here early in the morning, uh, people are here late at night. We have, uh, all their, all their, our gym physi- physical education classes using that track area. And so can we at least just cover up the cinders? Maybe not have an, an official track, but at least do some work like that. And that really morphed itself again as the price became a lot more attainable in terms of what uh, initial numbers were given to us previously, that this might be an, an opportunity to really look a little bit bigger and and really hear from our community that has been asking for, uh, a synthetic track and for a turf field and really start looking at, maybe this is a possibility. So we investigated several companies, we interviewed those companies and really came down, uh, in partnership with the Building Construction Committee, uh, honing in on the Keystone Sports Construction. And that's where, uh, Mr. Sellers comes into play here. He, he was our key liaison. He's really shared with us a lot about his company and about what they're able to offer to do in terms of a project. So I'm gonna turn it over to him to really explain if the school district partnered with, uh, Keystone Sports Construction and they've done a ton of work so far partnering with us to get to this point, um, what does that look like? And what is, what is the model look like with Keystone Sports Construction? So that as a board, you're well aware of that, uh, and, and he'll talk a little bit about timeframe and, uh, processes here. So cause there's sellers, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
This one right here? Okay, great. Good evening, folks. Jeff Sellers, uh, Keystone Sports Construction. It's good to see some of you that I've met previously as well as everyone and appreciate the audience tonight. Um, so projects like this are exciting, not only for the school district and the athletes, but also the community at large. Because for the little guys that are coming up to see their brothers and sisters of older ages be able to play competitive sports, you know, and the best of class facilities is something that motivates them to continue on with their athletic endeavors as they move forward. And for the community at large, you know, whether that be youth athletic leagues that are, the community can benefit from to various age groups from walking and other exercise commitments, it's really something that's exciting. So when we come into these engagements, it's really from the standpoint of, we have no preconceived agenda. We really wanna listen and understand what it is the school district or the customer in general is looking to achieve. And how can we leverage our expertise to really bring forward creative ideas and thoughts that within a predefined working budget that are realistic? We're not looking to, to lead anybody down a path and then be like, oh, sorry, it costs four X what you think it's gonna be. It's really to say, okay, we understand generally where your, your financial, um, handcuffs are, so to speak. And how do we really bring forward something that achieves all of your goals or the majority thereof? Um, so we are based right in Phoenixville, Pennsylvania. So we're a local company. Um, all the work that we do is our employee base. So we're a large, we're the largest, uh, sports construction forum in the mid Atlantic region, number one, uh, private growing company in the United States, um, from a, a revenue growth point of view. Um, so we have large infrastructure. Phoenixville High School is one of our most recent projects. So if you're ever down that way. Uh, but Ole Valley is very close. We've obviously done theirs as well. Um, but our objective coming in here as a full-service sports construction, we build our business on building out synthetic turf fields, whether that be replacing existing turf fields that were there or endeavors such as this, where you have a natural state and are aspiring to convert that over to a, a synthetic environment. Um, and that is really where we built our business. And then through the years, it became obvious that schools have many broader, uh, interests and needs, you know, for their school districts, whether that be tracks, tennis courts, everybody right now with their tennis courts are looking to swap them over to pickleball. So that's a huge business for us at this point in time. So it became evident that we can be more of a, a resource to our client base. And thus, we expanded all of our, the portfolio of offerings that we, um, bring forward to a customer whereby once we typically have a project, you know, under contract with them, they see the end result, we at least at a minimum are trusted resource for future projects under consideration. And we typically win the, the lion's share of those as well. Um, so as you can see up there, you know, we really touched on what I call is everything for the outdoor athletic experience. And by having those resources in-house and being able to pull across those divisions, it affords us a, a unique knowledge set whereby individuals on this side of the table have, hey, we would like to see X, Y, and Z. You folks in the middle might be similar, it might be different and so on and so forth. We can speak to all the considerations that are perhaps not even brought forward to say, this is why you may wanna include and that, uh, this particular piece of the equation or not. Here's your pros and cons associated with that. Here are your cost considerations. So that way at a minimum, you're making informed decisions because ultimately that's gonna allow your, your end game to, to be achieved. Um, so the lion's share of the projects that we do from a, a procurement standpoint are through Co-Stars, which is the state cooperative purchasing program. Um, it is the, the best resource that is out there. And, you know, there was a path, you know, going back about, you know, ten years, even seven years ago where, you know, it's push everything out to public bid. And, you know, while that avenue has its values, um, it also creates a lot of challenges where the lowest price is not always the best. And then you get a lot of multiple entities involved in a particular project. So Co-Stars has now become the go-to resource for all school districts because it affords you the ability to make sure the price always is the end all be all, you know, kind of bottom line. But to control your own destiny is relates to all the other variables. Who is the company? Who's gonna be doing the work? Are there gonna be other entities involved? What are the surfaces that we are using? Do we like their warranties and, and longevity components, performance and the like associated with that? So Co-Stars has really become the de facto within the state of P A as it relates to a procurement mechanism whereby anything and everything that we touch associated with this project can be procured, you know, through that mechanism. So when we get into engagements like this, we've already had three or four, um, I'd, I'd say maybe three meetings, you know, with, you know, various stakeholders, um, and a multitude of just offline phone conversations. But, you know, you're at, at a great state because you have a natural state and everything that you see, it's like, well, we could put this here, we could put that there. You really need to think about things as a blank canvas. So when we come in, I like to break things down into basically three buckets. You know, let's talk about if synthetic turf is a consideration, what does that look like in terms of, of the system itself? What are the sports that are gonna be played on this? There are varying types of, of synthetic turf surfaces out there, some more conducive to certain sports than others. But when you're looking at a multipurpose type of engagement, there are a few that align very well, but each of those have varying price points. So we like to educate and talk through that. Then we like to get into, you know, some of the, you know, aesthetics, you know? What do we wanna have on there as far as logo treatments and what are the sport line packages that are gonna be on there, et cetera? And through that, we go through a very exhaustive process to sort of get to an agreed upon scope of work. Understanding that scope of work can always be refined, um, throughout the project, you know, almost to the eleventh hour. We do that same type of thing as it relates to tracks, you know, what are we trying to solve for in this, in this track that is under consideration here? Is this a performance track? Is it something that is for the community? All the track surfaces that we bring to the table is the record tan brand, but there are three different tiers, all have different price considerations. So is this a, a destination where you're gonna be hosting districts or regionals or other things like that? Um, or is it simply what we wanna make sure that we have a very good track for our own track team as well as, um, our physical education programs and so forth? So it's making sure you understand the differences between the systems and why one may not be, you know, even though it may be the best system at a higher price point, may not be necessarily for what you're trying to achieve. They're all fantastic systems, but all have different price considerations. So really walking through and educating is how we go through that. And then we do that same exercise with all the complex amenities from scoreboards to bleachers, um, everything that, that's really listed up there, et cetera, to really make sure that everything is fully thought through and that there's nothing that has really not been uncovered. And then at that point in time, we're at a point where we have an agreed upon scope of work. So this is an exercise and this transitions to the next slide whereby we did this with, uh, Wattsburg School District of customers of ours on the western part of the state where over a year, we went through this exercise in ongoing capacity. And what's interesting here on this rendering, you notice that they have a blue field that was like Boise State, you know, nobody has that. But till the eleventh hour, they thought that was pretty cool. That's the path that they wanted to go. But what they did is they got to school and the, um, the students involved through a social media exercise to say, hey, let's have a vote. Do you like this? Do you like that? Really, eh, eh, ramped up, you know, the engagement for and excitement for the project as a whole. And then ultimately the outcome is what you just see here whereby it was a, an eight lane track, a brand new synthetic turf field with their track events in the respective D zones. You'll notice that we turf the infield of the baseball and the softball fields and all the asphalt work for pedestrian and ambulatory as long as well as the bleachers, lighting and so forth. So again, this was a year's worth of work and collaboration to make sure that every nuance was understood, inspected, evaluated, price considerations put against that to know that we could deliver what they wanted within a working budget that was known to all. So there was no surprises throughout, you know, the entire process. So, uh, partner of ours that is very close to, to where you guys is Ole Valley. So this is one where, you know, this kind of mimics, you know, what you guys, if the middle school is the location, what a look and feel of your potential track and turf, if that were to be part of it, you know, could look like. So you have obviously a six lane track here. They chose to do the track in the colorations of their school. And then they have their soccer and their field hockey field right in the middle. Perhaps you guys have played there recently, but it's one where it's one of the top fields that are out there. Their field hockey program is historically very strong. And field hockey actually dictated which type of turf surface they wanted. Typically, when you go into these engagements, it's, you know, football, soccer, field hockey is sort of the last voice. In this case, it was unique and that field hockey really drove the bus as it related to the surface they wanted, the pile heights, you know, et cetera. So it really gives you an idea, you know, kind of what you can envision, you know, in your front yard. So what we've done here, I, I pointed the Midwest, this is out near Harrisburg, but the first field that we did for them was on the left-hand side, which the sole focus of that field was to serve, um, field hockey and soccer. That is gonna be that. But while they were considering in phase two, which is the track and the turf on, on the right side, that was really never even a consideration for them. So they wanted to make sure that they could play football on there if they needed to in the lower left-hand corner. They actually have softball on there. Um, so it was an understanding whereby they were so thrilled with that first turf field. And what we find with a lot of our clients is once they have one, you know, they find the wherewithal to figure out how do we get two. Um, usually those are years apart, but it creates, you know, an understanding of what these athletes are accustomed to playing to. And, and I go to this, I have three high school athletes and, you know, from a synthetic turf point of view, the value of having that on site is one, gonna enhance their enjoyment of the game, playability and scheduling is now no longer an issue because you can play in, you know, monsoon-like conditions on that field without issue. Um, but it's also most athletes that are playing high school level and middle school level ball are playing in some form of travel organization, whether it's field hockey, lacrosse, football, et cetera. And evidently, they always are going to tournaments every single weekend. They're playing on turf because they're going to environments where those environments were built to cater to the travel programs. They wanna ensure playability. And for the investment that those teams are making to go there, they can't have rainouts. So it's become the go-to. Playing on natural surfaces has really been something that is, you know, sort of odd these days, as weird as that sounds. So when we started this whole conversation, it was, um, you know, really, how do we make this track work, you know? And we might aspire to put in turf at some point in time. Well, the infrastructure and how you build these things is very intricate and there's a lot that goes into it and more than meets the eye. So one of the conversations we had is if a track were to be the primary goal and objective here, when you're building that out, there's a curbing infrastructure that really houses the entirety of a synthetic turf field. And all the elements that you, that you don't see but are subgrade from rocks to, um, stormwater management, water control panels, you know, et cetera. That if turf was ever a consideration, whether it be next year, five years from now, or whenever, that when you put in this track, you should put in that curbing infrastructure at the exact same time because it will benefit you long-term, not only from a cost point of view, but that curb will have to be put in at some point if turf is there. But that turf sits right up against your, your trench strains, which in turn is right next to the asphalt. And once you start messing around with that, asphalt can become compromised. Now all of a sudden, all the money you spent sort of, you know, it can create some problems there. So it's better to be forward thinking and, and put a little bit more money into it. But at the end of the day, even when you're putting in tracks, you don't think about this. You have to manage stormwater. It's an impervious surface. And where does that water go? How's it collected? What types of infrastructure subgrade are required in order for this to be approved, not only locally, but more importantly through D E P? And that's the M P D S permit. Um, so those are things and we have a conversation forthcoming with the Conservation District in a couple of days to talk about requirements. And we're very astute as to client is in a particular location, we know what the minimum requirements are gonna be. You have some unique inter- uh, challenges out front that need to be addressed, that we're gonna explore that. And we've spent probably, you know, a hundred man-hours at this point, you know, no cost to the district to really understand, explore and bring forward any and all of these potential challenges. What do they mean? Are they existent, nonexistent? What are the cost concerns? That way, as we start to get into the budgetary impacts of that, it's all known and there's no surprises again. Um, but back to this, you know, typically, once we have a project with a customer, it affords us the ability to, you know, continue to evolve the relationship and work with them. So again, this is just a general rendering that, you know, a graphics department put together of, you know, what could look like in the front door. So we went with an all green field because that's more customary with, you know, what you see, um, you know, from a soccer field. And obviously field hockey that is on here with a six lane track that is going around there. Generally, it's a scenario where within your D zones, which are the areas that are within the, the radial points on the outside, but inside of where the, the turf would be potentially, um, that you really wanna make all track interior. So you can have your events over there and so forth. That's the, the best way to go about that. But from an aesthetic point of view, this could really look like anything you want it to. It could look like Ole Valley or it could look like your own school's colors. Whatever, I mean, I, I was saying, I could put in Ole Valley's colors, but your own schools, you can make it your own. So the bottom line is to be able to get to something that, okay, we can get our arms around. This makes sense. We can see where it sits within the footprint of the school. Now we can get into all the aesthetic treatments and the like. Now we can get into all the aesthetic treatments and the like, you know, downstream. Um, but to bring this off, let's talk about what this process looks like because it is not a short one and it is a an intricate one. It relates to how you go about this. So typically, when you come onsite here, your first steps are to do a couple of different things. One, you're doing survey of the area of potential disturbance and beyond that to make sure that if any future projects are gonna be done, you already have the survey work that is completed. Further, you do a lot of geotechnical work whereby you're gonna go to the area of potential disturbance and you're gonna go probably take six to eight test plots of varying depths and sizes. So you can understand what is going on subgrade, uh, what are infiltration rates or are suitable or unsuitable soils, rock. We try to uncover the unknowns as much as we can possibly do so. And then through that process, it affords us the ability to take that data and build out your initial set of roughly about four to six, uh, um, pages of civil engineering design plans. And once we're at that point, it enables us to really go down multiple paths simultaneously. One, we can continue the discussion around aesthetics and what should this look like and what will the outcome be and so forth. So that's a a slow and evolving path. But more importantly, once we have stormwater management plans, we now have the ability to sit down and have very robust conversations with the Conservation District. We know that this school district sits in this area, that it is in the middle of a high-quality or EV watershed area. And thus, in order for DEP to even approve this, it's gonna require certain types of sub-basony, either subgrade or built on the exterior. Typically, a lot of that is done subgrade now because folks don't have the land to basically put external drains in there. But it affords us the ability to really start to build out those plans and understand. So that way, when we go to final submission, we're giving them a set of plans that they can look at, they feel comfortable with, and that they can rubber stamp the first time versus the whole back and forth of iterations and changes. Ultimately, to get a a project through DEP, you have to allocate six months. And that is just from initial submission. And that's just a function of the process and how long it takes that to get through their works. We've seen many projects and we have some up in the Scranton market right now where it it only took three months and that's great. And we, because of how we do this, the engineering partner that we use to make sure that we've done this, we've done five, six dozen projects in and around the area whereby we know that school district A is in this area. Here's the baseline minimum requirements in order to get this permitted. Now, if we're fortunate, part of the conversation on Thursday is to really understand what are those types of things that are gonna be required here? Because it then gives us the ability to kind of tailor the plans according to that, still over-engineering to make sure that we get passed straight away. But if we have the ability to then value-engineer backwards, that's what enables us to take it from here and get that really tightened into the the client's budget. Um, so that conversation will be very enlightening on Thursday and will very much help us with the next steps. Next steps being what I just described previous in the survey and the geotechnical and then building out of the civil engineering plans. But all of that, you know, process here probably takes about, you know, call it three to four weeks to do all that work, get all that data, bring forward those plans to then we, where we can get to the actual submission phase, um, from a permitting point of view. Once we get through all of permitting and all that thing, that at that point in time, we are have the ability to obviously put equipment in the ground and do the work. But one of the paths that I referenced before is why we're doing that, it's easy for any company to come up here and say, hey, track, turf, materials, put in some arbitrary model of X amount per square foot, this is roughly gonna cost you this. Well, our experience is that is the wrong approach because what that does is it sets a level of expectation of this is gonna cost this and it better not go above. You guys don't want change orders? We don't want change orders. So by investing our time, resources and so forth into the early steps here of geotech, survey, building out those civil engineering plans, aside from the benefits I just described, we can quickly understand these are the amount of materials that are gonna be required to pull this project off. And a lion's share of the cost of these projects unfortunately is subgrade in terms of rock, stone, stormwater management panels, drainage, et cetera, but they're all mandatory. And where your footprint is sitting out here on the doorstep is you have a creek bed that is out there, lion's share of the time it's dry, but it also is there because of a hundred-year storm. Well, we have to engineer this for the hundred-year storm in case that were to happen. So we, that's part and parcel of why this will do that. But ultimately, it affords us the ability to say, hey, we know that to the penny, this is what this is gonna be. We're signing the agreement to that number and everybody's comfortable and everything has been exhausted. And I'm not having to come back and say, whoops, we missed a big, major thing here and it cost this. And now we're all too far down the road to to stop the train, right? And that's not where we wanna be. So that's what's gonna be happening here in the in the near term. From a project timelines point of view, uh, again, a lot of the items that I just referenced, you know, those can be done, you know, over the next couple of weeks timeframe to the extent that we wanna, you know, really push this forward. Permitting again, you know, six months. So if we were to, um, work with the the school board, continue to work with the administration to have a contract in place, you know, sometime in December, that affords us the ability to do a lot of those things, which we will do them in advance, as long as we have the understanding we're moving forward. Um, but then to be able to get into a permitting phase around the problem with DEP during December or November, December is while they are very difficult to work with as it relates to how fast they move, it's also the holidays, so they're pretty much off. So we have to say, okay, we can't really start this process till January, assuming worst case, we're January till June. Then from there, during that process, we're obviously finalizing all of the aesthetic components and then the other cosmetic or ancillary items that you may wanna add. And at that point in time, you know, when you get to actual doing the project and the construction of it, you know, it's very quick relative to the aggregate process. But by having this field available to your students come fall of of next year is absolutely realistic to the extent that that we move the process forward, you know, in the near term. Um, so I know I like to talk a lot. I try to provide as much education as possible. Um, I'm available via text message and mobile. You have my contacts and to any and all board members who wanna reach out and answer any questions that you have or don't feel comfortable asking today, more than happy to do that. Um, I know that this, I'm gonna skip over one thing here real quick, but just to kind of give you an idea. In the back of this, which I'm sure will be shared, there's a whole host of different projects that we've done. I encourage all of you to take a look at these because it's not to say, hey, look at what we did. It's that everybody has done some very cool things from, you know, what their district looks like. You know, this is Wilkes-Barre is an example. They went from, you know, a very large budget to then we dialed in and given them a lot where they're gonna end up with five turf fields potentially, or at least three turf fields on here and it could grow. But this is their stadium that we just did for those folks. But there's a lot of cool aesthetic treatments throughout here of how folks have designed their fields. This is Lincoln University down in Southern Chester County. Um, and it's just thought-provoking. This is Jim Thorpe School District. So everybody gets rave reviews and this is very, you know, interesting to take a peek at what yours could be. Um, so I encourage you to take a peek at that. Um, so I'm gonna take a breath. I'm gonna turn this over. Yeah. Oh, you got it. Yep, aim and schedule. So the way that this works, and this is actually a material conversation. So, um, let me just take a quick peek here, make sure I'm not missing anything. Great. So right now, project costs, you know, again, we know sort of what the working budget is based upon our previous and ongoing conversations with the administration. And we're making every effort to align with that goal right now. Again, it's difficult to say exactly where we're gonna be until we have these conversations on Thursday, do some of the work that I described. But what I can guarantee is that we are going to give you what you want and we are gonna engineer that way that project in such a way that we're gonna be focused on achieving that budget. And if it's gonna be north or less ideally, we are gonna let you know. And if it's north, we're gonna tell you why. And then if that's the opportunity for us to back something out or continue on, we'll go ahead and do so. But we're doing that with information, not just estimation. But most importantly, when you think about these projects, we typically charge thirty percent of contract upon signing and then thirty percent upon mobilization, thirty percent upon surface, so that would be track slash turf. And then third, and then ten percent of punch out. So if we're moving this project forward, you know, perhaps as early as December, right? What we're gonna be asking for is thirty percent of the number that we bring forward. The lion's share, the other seventy percent of this, there's gonna be no funds paid until we actually are doing the work, which candidly is not gonna be till, you know, mid-late next summer, assuming the normal permitting processes. So, um, as the school district looks at how much funds do we have right now, is there gonna be a gap? What does that gap look like? I've got a lot of time to figure out ways, either through relationships and partnerships with health networks, to local sponsors, to whatever. Um, or just different ways to finance the project to say, hey, we've got a lot of time to breathe here and figure that piece out because we don't have that, you know, need to put those dollars forward. The other benefit, and I I'm not educating on anybody on anything they don't know, these are tough economic times. And unfortunately, you know, we'll see hopefully things stabilize. But regardless of if they stabilize and eat or start to come down, a lot of the products that we're dealing with, track, asphalt, subgrade, turf materials, these are all petroleum-based products. So they are tied to what the current economic conditions are of the day. That said, the industry at large, they saw four different increases in price for turf over the last year. Tracks have gone up, I think it's nineteen percent over the next year. Come January, they're going up again. If the economy goes back to where it was five years ago and everything is fantastic, the industry is still gonna say, this is the new baseline going forward. So these projects are never gonna get cheaper. That's the reality. But what I will say, and I'll bring forward, you know, this particular project real quick. So this is up in, uh, Mid Mid Valley School District up near Scranton. So synthetic turf, baseball, softball field, brand-new tennis courts, brand-new stadium with the track and so forth. We were, this is a significant, you know, project, eight figures. The number's public and go take a look at it. But at the end of the day, we were able to, upon signing, lock in forty percent of those costs simply because there's a lot of controllables that are out there in terms of the synthetic turf systems, the track systems and so forth. Because we work exclusively with AstroTurf, who's owned by the Sport Group, Recertan is their their track division, then they have Flybold, which is their their tennis courts. Being their largest sort of vendor and installer and sole distributor and installer for their products in the Midland region, we have the ability to lock in a lot of pricing, even if we're not putting those products in the ground for nine months. So we can bring a lot of financial benefit to the district by doing things sooner whereby wherever we end up, which is gonna be within the budget tolerances we've been discussing, the lion's share, I would, a good portion of it, I should say, is gonna be able to be locked in as a contract signing. And that's again to the the district's benefit. So I will turn this over and step aside and then I'm available for any questions and we can go from there. But I do appreciate the audience this evening. Um, apologies if I was long-winded. Yeah, go ahead. So when we price these out, we account for a very large logo that will fit and or fill the entirety of the center soccer field. So whatever it ends up being, it's accounted for. So that's just really, again, that's a late-stage decision.
Sure. Still a little bit influx because of that meaning of those.
Sure, yeah, it it, yeah. So I mean, projects of this nature, assuming best-case conditions, when you're talking about a full track, full turf, you know, you're in and around, you know, loaded to, you know, two to two-point-three, two-point-four neighborhood, right? Worst case, um, is usually the case. Typically, it's gonna be less than that. It's gonna be high ones. The challenges that we're dealing with here are multi-pronged. One, we're dealing with timing of contract as it relates to the products and materials as well as in relation to them being petroleum-based and so forth. The bigger issues are how we have to deal with DEP and the Conservancy District out there. What types of infrastructure are we gonna have to put in subgrade in order to allow this to even be approved? And the size of the infrastructure subgrade, infiltration basinry and so forth can be substantial. And that in turn means more rock, more flat panels, more everything that goes in there. To the extent that we can value-engineer that way down, we absolutely will. And, um, I just say, you know, generally speaking, that's in and around where these projects are gonna be. So I'm thinking, you should be thinking to be, you know, kind of one point eight to the high side. But what we have the ability to do is structure relationships in such a way whereby we can put a contract and sort of phase it whereby we do the things that are required upfront, whereby we can give, hey, here's an opinion of cost for this. This is where we know this is likely going to a fall, low to high, somewhere in there. But by doing the exercises, survey, geotechnical survey, engineering, and taking that all the way through the permitting process, it affords us the ability to dial that into the penny. And at that point in time, if you say, hey, that's still more than we wanna bite off, then you don't have to. But now you have designed, engineered, permitted plans that can be leveraged for five years going forward. That's a benefit to you. You're protected from a cost savings perspective. Um, and that's a path that some have taken. Uh, but more importantly, it gives us the ability to value-engineer that. And and what I will say is on that Mid Valley one, you know, when we originally did that, there was where their budget was and where that project was ending up, there was about a, let's call it a three-and-a-half-million-dollar spread. It wasn't a small spread, but it was understanding and that was known upfront. How do we get that? Ultimately, they said, you know, worst case, this is our absolute, the furthest we can go. We were able to do the exercises I described and value-engineer that thing backwards to be able to get that underneath their budget closer to their original budget. So it's a, it's not a, it's as much an art as it is a science of being able to to get this where it needs to be and being creative with how that we do this. Now, what's benefit of your infrastructure outside is you have a lot of land available. There's significant cost savings to the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars of being able to keep the exported soils onsite. There's benefit in doing that, whereas in Mid Valley's cases, they were landlocked. They didn't know where to go. Well, we ended up being able to keep all that onsite by building up their tennis courts, solving the flooding problem, but putting those tennis courts twelve feet up in the air. And it was a win-win for everybody. It saved them a lot of money. So there's a lot of ways in which we can get to your number. At the end of the day, you could talk to all of our references, all of our customers. We always come in where we wanna be and there's no misleading throughout that. So we're gonna give you the worst case and we're gonna get down to the the best case it possibly can be. Please. Sure. So when you think about, obviously, this is a massive investment, right? But you're thinking about the long term here. So when you think about a a track, when that when that goes in there, the new asphalt that's building that out, which you don't have there, that typically, if built properly, that's gonna give you thirty years, okay? Then you actually have the track, the wearing course and track material that goes on top of that. Tracks typically get sort of refreshed every ten years, okay? When you think about a synthetic turf, the base infrastructure that is built to support that underneath the ground, if built properly, which we do, they are built for five generations of turf fields, so in essence fifty years, okay? So when you think about, when am I gonna have to deal with these? It will not be for another decade or probably a little bit more before you have to think about, hey, we need to replace our turf surface or we need to, um, put a new, you know, kind of upgrade to the track surface that is on there. Those are far down the road at that point in time. And the cost to do those is roughly thirty percent of what this engagement is at the end of the day. But ongoing, once this infrastructure is in here, the track, there's really not much to do to it. You know, at the end of the day, maybe you do a little bit of striping to it, repaint the lines, but those are years off down the road. Synthetic turf, that is a very simple engagement. So much like we do at Ole Valley, um, we go over there and we take care and groom their fields. And that's a couple thousand dollars a year for us to go in there, do deep cleanings, uh, concussion protocol testing on the fields and so forth. So it's, um, a relatively nominal expense to, it's far less than what it takes your crews to be out there mowing that grass and seeding that grass and doing all the work that they do to it today. It's a far less, you know, annual cost to do that. Um, so if that answers your question. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, in in our previous meetings with you, privately, fully committed. Could you go back to another slide? I think that's what I wanna see. Yeah.
This one?
You're going to have to do all of this stuff upfront. And you're gonna have to determine how much it's gonna cost you to do that, to fill up. What if we say, you know, we don't want to have to get done with that first portion?
So there's ways that we can phase this agreement, okay? So survey, geotechnical work and some of those things is a relatively affordable proposition where we'll tell you exactly what it is and that'll get us off the ground and running. To take that, you know, all the engineering fees is we would give you, this is what it's gonna cost to do that. This is what enables us to take that all the way through to the permitting piece. And once we do that, assuming our opinion of cost that I referenced, you want to, uh, move forward? You can or you can say no further.
Okay, so you actually would be, if you're being, the the design, including the other good basis for the design itself and estimate the cost or what it's gonna take to do that before you touch it?
Well, we have the ability to do, it really comes down to how we wanna structure this agreement. So if we are definitively going to move forward, there's consensus among the board that yes, we wanna do that. We have an idea where this range is gonna be. Let's go ahead and do this. We will do some of these things in advance at our expense to make sure that we're able to get to where we need to be to say, this is what the price.
All right, that that's exactly where I I thought we should be going. So I basically was thinking about this, you know. So basically, we would have a cost for the the site prep and the permitting and what have you at that point there. Once we knew what it was gonna cost, and then we could break it out into the the cost for the turf field alone. And the the track. And the the track with the turf curb, should we wanna do that in increments later on? Is that sound correct?
You have the ability to go that. It will be cost prohibitive. So if you're gonna do just the track and the curb, that's fine. Hundred percent. We'll get you through the permitting process in order for you to be able to do that, okay? If your intention is somewhere to do the turf, whether that's three, five years from now. It's in your interest to do that now because it's one mobilization where we're doing a lot of work that's gonna benefit the aggregate infrastructure of the. Stormwater management subgrade, how the asphalt ties into the the um to the drains as well as to the curb, to all the infrastructure that's below there. If you say, you come back and say, hey, four years from now, now we wanna put in the turf and the curb's not there. Now you. If the curb is there, well, we're still building bridges over that, and we're ripping and tearing it all in there. Bottom line is, it's gonna cost you more. So the field itself, this is hypothetically say, today costs, you know, a million dollars. And five years from now, that field's gonna be one point eight.
Okay, could could we ask you, though, give us the upfront site prep cost as a as a total line item? And then the cost of the turf field is a line item, and then the contracted line. In other words, those three major costs should cover everything. That would be in a not-to-exceed contract.
In a perfect world, coming out of Thursday, we're gonna have a very clear understanding of what is going to be required via the conservation.
Okay, and you could break those.
Whereby I would put together, based on that information and knowing how we do this and what's gonna be the cost of this and what's gonna be required. I'll be able to say, here's one contract for section A, it's all the engineering costs. Here's all the costs for the project itself. And here's the the turf and the track broken down. Here's the total number. We're agreeing to that total number. Let's rock and roll.
Fixed price at that point.
Done, right. That's the way most of these come about. Um it's the rare instance where we do something like this done with Mid Valley. It's just because their desire for the whole pizza. And their budget for only three quarters of it were so apart, we had to come up with a creative way to protect them. Understand how we could value engineer so they could get the whole pie within their their budget. But most, we will sit down and we'll say, we know exactly the square footage of this track. We know the exact square footage of this turf field. We now, based on this conversation, know what the infrastructure is gonna be required. We can price that out right now. We know exactly what that's going to be. Now, once we do this, the geotechnical work, that's gonna give us the ability to tap into some of the unknowns. Unsuitable soils, you know, et cetera. And if unsuitable soils are there, we have to stabilize those soils before we can build the infrastructure. That's not uh an overwhelming expense, but it's something that would have to be done. That's the benefit of doing those things in advance. And we would do that as we're tightening up the numbers. So before we sit back with you both and say, here's the final number, we will have done those things. So that way we know what's there in order to make that happen.
What will the Berks County Soil District or Conservation District, you know, what will they be looking at as far as, you know, the amount of disturbance? That you're gonna have to incur there? They're gonna be looking at, if you go over a certain amount, it's gonna be additional uh requirements for water management and things like that?
There's a litany of items that they look at that we have to check the boxes for. So when you're disturbing over an acre of land, which we clearly are, that's why we have to go to them at the end of the day. From there, we're gonna be able to say, all right, this, they know, and they're gonna tell us, these folks are in a high-quality E V watershed. Therefore, they absolutely are gonna require uh infiltration basins, subgrade. Now, are they as big as this table or are they as big as this room? So that's the questions that we need to get a handle on, what's gonna be the requirements there? Because that's a massive swing in cost. We will have a very good understanding of what those requirements are gonna be on Thursday.
Which will be a big difference, you got a huge underground basin versus some.
Yes.
A hundred percent, exactly. Now, and also, when we, you know, not keep using Mid Valley as the example, but you we saw it all. And when we initially put together the the plans of how we were gonna do this, after we had detailed conversation with the Conservation District. We were able to shrink those significantly and reroute and do some other creative things that achieved their objectives. Allowed us to manage the water properly, as well as reduce the quantities of materials that were required to get it done. So it's a very collaborative, ongoing, back-and-forth dialogue. Leveraging our expertise, meeting their guidelines or requirements to ensure this is done.
It's my understanding that the, you're going to have to build this this drainage system, if you call it that. By taking out the soil that is there and putting in crushed stone or some.
So there's a, there's a variety of different stones that go in there, fifty-seven stones, two-way modified stones to.
Right.
Smaller crust stones that are in there. Interwoven within that is a lot of flat panel infrastructure. Whereby when that water goes through that, it reaches the herringbone kind of construct that channels that water outwards to larger outlet pipes. That either channel it down further into the ground, into these subgrade infiltration basins, or export it into a natural basin or one that we built.
There's there's a depth there that would be advantageous, and then there's a depth there if you hit a a particular type of soil, such as clay. Which would require much more attention.
Everywhere is a little bit different. So thinking about, and not to get too off-the rails here, but if we look at. Tim Thorpe School District, okay, is an example. This sat at the base of three mounts. So the water that that field got was outrageous. In order for this to be accommodated, basically from. End line where the of the end zone where the O is, you can basically call it out to the thirty, thirty-five yard line, all the way over, one big square there. Beyond your traditional eight to ten inch snow pile uh stone profile basis supports the service system itself. We had to go down an additional three feet there across that entire span. Make sure that we had the appropriate amount of volume to handle the water that would be channeled into there. Which would then infiltrate out the bottoms and or we could control how it's sun or daylight and export it outward.
So it's just like, basically like a sewage percolation test.
So that that was, it you could think about it that way. It's it's kind of a natural holding tank again today. But if you think about, you know, so that's their experience. Then we go to Mid Valleys, oh Midwest, excuse me, where the heck was that? So the field on the on the left-hand side there, we have a very smaller, uh very much of a smaller footprint that we had to build there. But it went down ninety, is an example, by, you know, however, you know, basically went from the end line to the eighteen-yard box. You know, kind of something along those lines. Every location is different. How the field is engineered, subgrade is different based upon where that school is located and what the local conservation district's requirements are.
Would you perform per- percolation test?
All of that is done via that whole entire process.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else?
Alright, so I just wanted to speak a, a few minutes about the funding side of it. Um as Andrew kind of back, gave us the background. Um this turf track presentation is not a standalone project. This is part of the Phase Four, um as we initially called it, the ESCO project. Um that we'd started, I think about a year ago initially, and then we started the investment grade audit. Uh I believe it was in February. Um so we went through the investment grade audit with one of the selected candidates that we were gonna move forward with. And we created a list of items through their E C Ms. And one of them, uh I think it was E C Ms five and six. Fifteen and sixteen uh was stadium upgrades. And we had decided to move forward with that with a budget of about five hundred thousand dollars. Out of the essentially allotted budget that we had for this Phase Four project. Um so you'll see that as a line item that has essentially shifted over uh to stadium upgrades for the I S M S project. Uh as we we could call it now. Um one of the recommend, one of the requests that we had, just with the growing track participation and also just for community use, was a synthetic track. So the company that we are probably moving forward with for the ESCO project gave us a quote of about one point two million. Uh for the track itself. So we put that into our budget. Um and that's where you, we get that number. Uh that was a quote that they had given us. Um so I would say for the stadium project itself and this presentation tonight, we have about one point seven set aside. Within a budget that we already have, that consists of bond proceeds, capital reserve, and also S R dollars as we have that chiller. Um and part of the the whole project. Um I would say the one part that we do wanna keep in mind, as Jeff had mentioned, is. Basically, we have anywhere from twelve to sixteen, eighteen months, um from when we say we're gonna start this project until completion. Uh so if we are a little short, we do, I mean, annually, historically, the district has set aside money in capital reserve. Uh so we do have that option. I would say the district has had meetings with, you know, sports medicine. Um entities in the area about possible partnerships and funding uh for this project. So that's kind of where the money is at this point. There's about one point seven. Um I do wanna point out, though, we also, out of that one point seven, we do have the Musco lighting. Uh which was about two hundred thousand dollars that we had previously approved. And we also have Zach Bartley currently earmarked. Who's doing the stadium upgrades for the bleacher project currently. Um and that was, I think, about six, eight thousand dollars. Um and there'll be some additional costs associated with that, just some things that they come across. Um so that's kind of where I, where we're at as far as the funding piece. The Musco lighting. That's about two hundred thousand. So I would say rounding, we have about one point five. That is unearmarked for this project currently.
So that's a great question. Unfortunately, this physical facility is really landlocked. Uh in terms of adding uh parking, the only place that we have evaluated adding parking. Uh that would be feasible would be uh removing the tennis courts at this building. And then putting an extended parking lot up in that area. And that that would be really the only leftover land per se to be able to evaluate that. We've looked at that through a few iterations of different engineers and architects along the way, um knowing that that is a limiting factor of this facility. And honestly, one of the reasons why we started at the high school, um because there is a plethora of parking at the high school. All in the wrong location, because it's in the front of the building and the field's in the back of the building. But that is the reason why um we started that. But a- again, a- as we look here, that will be a a limiting factor for us. And so it, we currently use the back, the bottom parking lot. We use the top parking lot of where the tennis court is. Uh and then um the, really, the overflow starts to use street-side parking at that point.
And how many people does that, um you know, what's the capacity? And then with enhancements um that would come with a significant investment, what do we project or forecast our need would be? And what is the gap? What is the size of that gap? And what are some strategies around um accommodating? Um that gap or that delta?
That's a great point. We'll definitely look into that. Absolutely.
The design that you showed us there, I, we have a track, and I think there is some field, event fields, uh things there, or is that?
Correct.
On the right side there, it looks like.
Correct, so.
That that would be included in that design?
Correct. So you have typically in one D zone is where you're gonna put your long jump, your triple jump. Uh pole vault, and then you have your high jump and and other things in the other D zone that is there. Um so right now, this is again, it's a rendering whereby you have turf that is shown in that D zone where you have the long jump and triple jump. You know, in all practicality, you do something more along the lines of what Ole did, whereby you just have the D zones being tracked and drilled.
Okay, so.
And then you have those events, you know, in there, right? Now you're throwing events and so forth, which hit outside of that. Correct, yes.
So that brings me to the next question.
So currently, there are uh two storage sheds that are at the base of the of the fee, uh of the bank at the field. Uh yeah, they'll need some upgrading because they're they're starting to get dated, but they're they're sufficient for now, yeah.
I mean, you asked the question, Mr. Sellers said, oh, yes, I'll build a whole E C O stadium. But I, to the best of my knowledge, this board and this, in this forum, we haven't. Debated that. Have we, have we heard a presentation that says, this is how many kids want that? This is how many? Like, are we there? I guess I'm a little bit surprised to hear that we're down that path already.
So, a couple, a couple thoughts there. One, we partner currently our track team with Quitstown.
Right.
Uh that has evolved to a point where the track team now is our own track team. So we have a Brandywine Heights track team.
Meaning the kids, Brandywine kids can compete as Brandywine, not Coogers.
That's correct.
Right.
Yep. And so we go there, we still use Quitstown staffing. Uh we have our own coaches that go and are e- essentially the Brandywine coaches. Uh but then a lot of the field events, a lot of the coaching specific to the different events, comes from the Quitstown staff. So that's the current path. At this point, the number of students that are running track. Um is at least equal to, if not more than what Quitstown's are. Uh and so it's becoming, at this point, almost unmanageable for there to be able to sustain that mass of a program. Uh and so at this point, the the plan isn't, here we go, we're gonna put this in place and move them over tomorrow. But we're starting to start have, we're starting to look at those conversations as a transition plan. Um P I double A B C I, B C I, A A, uh has been um. Working with us as we transition that plan, uh because we don't, because we partner together, and then we're going to events. When we're part, when we're doing track events against another school, now it's a three-school track event, and that's posed problems. Uh and so at this point, we have some waivers to get through another two-year cycle. But at some point, if the track numbers continue, we will have to evaluate, where do we go? So it hasn't been brought on as a formal proposal, but as this starts to evolve, that's part of the conversation.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I don't want anyone to think that. It just, I, we're well aware that at least up to recently, we've had declining enrollment. And we have some sports teams that we already fund, that we can barely fill a roster. And have a sufficient um depth of bench, which in ways is great, because that means our kids are getting lots of playing time and lots of one-on-one help with their. Um athletics from their coaches and that kind of thing. But at some point, as this is our size, can support. Just in terms of um the number of kids rostering every sport on the planet. Nor do we have the funds as a district to support um every sport that our kids might come up with. So I I would just ask again, that we be brought in to the conversation in this forum. As you guys are strategizing about what we, um athletic investments, sports teams, and therefore facilities. We're not gonna be able to fund them all. We don't have enough kids. Not to mention not enough money.
So I'm gonna give a brief overview of uh how scheduling would work when we have this, if we have this beautiful facility. Um so prioritization would be high school competitions, uh middle school competitions, high school practices, middle school practices. And youth organization use. We want everybody to have the ability to use the field as much as possible and get as much use out of it as we possibly can. Um there would be three set practice times for the turf field. Um that would be determined. Um we would try to rotate the times. Um it would also be uh dependent upon team schedules, away games, home games, things like that. But as you get in those first few early weeks, we would have enough time within a day to hold three set practice times. Those would be a three to five, a five to seven, and a seven to nine practice time, allowing um all three high school teams to utilize the field. During that early part of the season. Practice locations would be between the middle school and high school. Um middle school may have to go over to the high school for some practices. High school will still use the high school. And there will be transitions between both schools overall. Um so there is a sample schedule up on the screen for you to look at. Uh and again, this is early in the season where we don't have games and competitions going on. Uh the first week of the fall season is primarily all high school sports, so they would take turns using the field for those time slots. Uh second week, we join in middle school. And again, scrimmages and things like that start, so everything would be able to be adjusted. Uh the, in coordination with Brandywine Transportation, there's been discussion about how we would get students from the middle school over to the high school. And from the high school over to the middle school. So at the end of the day, uh because of the way the bus loop works. Our s- high school students would be able to catch the bus and come over to the middle school for early. And come over to the middle school for early afternoon practices. And then any middle school student that needs to go over to the high school for our practices would be able to take the bus at the end of the day. Um and one of the bus routes, uh currently bus nine, would be able to drop them off at the high school before returning. To their normal bus route, so that students have reliable transportation every day between the two locations. And then the turf facility would allow all three high school teams um to hold evening and afternoon games. Uh but trying to utilize evening games for all. Um it's something that we don't currently have. Our field hockey team. Can only play at four o'clock, so we would be looking to have them play evening games and um utilize the facility to its fullest. Any questions?
Right, excuse me, sorry. We're gonna uh open up to uh public comment relative to the agenda. I would ask that everyone try and keep their. Questions and comments uh to three minutes. Um I do have Mr. John Tomasi on the list here.
Hello, everybody. How are you? I'm John Tomasi, um Merx Town. Uh just wanna talk about, you know, we touched on logistics and it just seems to me a little odd. The shifting to go back and forth with high school to middle school, middle school to high school. So I just wanted you guys to really think about that concept. And if that, except that's really what we wanna do here. I just feel like. High school should stay at high school, middle school should stay at middle school. It seems pretty obvious to me, but just wanted you guys to think about that introspectively and. Consider maybe that as an approach. Thank you.
Any other visitors? Yes. Could you, you step up your microphone so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Kate Harms at Bryaningsville. Um so I'm a little confused. We've heard this presentation and, you know, even Sarah was able to talk to us about turf time and schedules. Um but I kept hearing a lot about track and track numbers. So what is the plan? I mean, how much is turf? Part of that track field and what are the numbers? Because when I look at that one sheet, it only says the track cost and it doesn't say. What the turf would be with the track. Um so that's one question I have. And then a second question is. Um you know, along the lines of what John had just asked about the high school, has anybody looked into it? What's the most um basic turf field without worrying about having a ton of access at the high school that if it became. Impossible to do because of D E Ps infiltration, is there a different type of setup we can do? And maybe even Keystone would say, you know, can you create a turf field? That is gonna have a lot more uh loose gravel and sand base that maybe will change the infiltration. And it could maybe work, you know, somewhere else easy. We'd have basins at the high school, especially out front. I'm just wondering if these were looked into without worrying about the access in the back. Have we looked at our front turf areas? I mean, grass areas that could turn into turf with fencing and stuff. So I'm just curious if that was looked at. I'm also curious what the price is. For the turf, it's if it's really included in what we discussed, because I keep seeing track talked about separately in budget.
Thank you. So um let me clarify a few things. One, the conversation today is basically a three tiered approach. One, uh as Mr. Hefner suggested, there's an engineering component to this that we have to evaluate. That's cost one. Cost two then is, what would it be to put a synthetic track in? That my opening comments were, the goal for this originally was, there's a center track, we have a ton of community members using this. We have um just our uh physical education classes using it. What does it mean just to put a base cov- covering on that, which evolved into? Well, it might be feasible to have a turf and a synthetic track with the costs that we have available set aside, which you heard this evening. So the the, the engineering side, step one, step two, synthetic track, and step three, cost would be a turf. We're really going towards having a turf and a synthetic track together if we can financially afford it. That would be ultimately the goal. Uh that way it supports all all our sports programs. Uh to your second point about the high school, that was where we originally pushed. To have that facility placed. As I mentioned earlier, I think the the cost was five point four million, just to be able to make that. If we pulled that accessibility side out, that was about two and a half million of that cost. Uh and so it still was um a little bit more than what it would be to upgrade this facility, just because a lot of the infrastructure is here. Um for instance, light posts. We have the light posts here, we we have a s- a stadium here, we have a support in school park. There's things over at that high school that there are no light posts. There's drainage. Uh areas that are literally about a foot away from the sideline, uh that would have to be explored to move that. Uh and and that has a lot of uh implications. So it's not off the table and if if. Honestly, the the conversation Thursday is gonna be a really driving point of where do we go and and can we do this and? Is it even financially, one, is it even financially plausible at that point? Because they could tell us that it's it's really um. Cost prohibitive to be able to do something like this. And then we know at the high school, it's gonna be a challenge because of the accessibility side, so then we have to overcome those challenges. So. It's been a lot of give and take and to your point, like, what are we doing? Uh it's been a lot of frustrations, but it's also exciting to be able to actually have this conversation. That has been long called for from the community as as we looked at this. Hopefully that helps.
And we did uh, we did have discussions and meetings prior about other field locations. As part of the, or part of the overall plan originally, uh we had looked at the front fields and moving softball fields here and. Putting athletic fields that were turf. Um and then we got into the the discussion of there's no bathroom facilities. Out front, so anyone who would wanna use the restrooms would have to come back. So we looked at portable restrooms and all those things were adding up to. A significant number as well. So there has been a lot of, trust me, a lot of meetings. As far as how to make this affordable and how to make it work. And we still don't know if we're, we're there. Hopefully we'll have more information on Thursday, so. Is there any other questions, comments?
Um my question to you is since you've weighed the pros and cons at both locations. And you've sta- stated that the high school is gonna come in at over five million. If we end up getting all the approvals to stick with the middle school, we've also talked about now using the tennis courts maybe as future parking. What would that cost be? Because if that comes in at two million, you're spending two million here, you're sort of almost. Reaching that threshold of what the high school is costing. And part, there is going to be, uh I'm concerned about a parking shortage. At the middle school when you have high school events, middle school, you know, kids dropping off, like there's other things that will be going on. Minus what's on the field. So will that be fact, I'm just wondering if that will also be factored into the cost?
At this point, the parking of re- redoing the tennis courts is not figured into the cost.
So that would be a a future cost i- down the, down the low.
If if we would decide to move that version, yeah. At this point, we're not looking to transition that. It it's one of the things we explored, but it's not part of the plan.
Okay.
Are you ready to share any of the outsides funding sources that you've looked into also?
No, not at this point.
I just know you're evaluating different options for us, so I didn't know if you had come to a conclusion.
We have, we s- and so we've evaluated uh part, some of our partnering companies that work with the school district. To look at to see if there's uh some angles to be able to weave in some community connections with that, uh to to. Bring some additional funds and some sponsorship to be able to offset the the bigger costs, knowing that we have this much set aside. Um the one point seven might, so the one point five, we still have a delta to be able to cover. And so we're hopeful that we can pull in some of those uh outside partnerships. Um that hasn't been official officially, kind of like formalized yet, so not quite there, but that conversation has happened. Uh and additionally, just some of the um. Maybe more unique community driven factors we've we've talked about, like a um a brick. Uh science, uh name a brick and then donate to the stadium and and be able to do some initiatives like that to offset some of the cost. Those have been explored as well. And I think if we go down this path, that will be part of the plan as well.
Do you, in that vein, do you, are are you working independently as just an administration on that? Or do you have a committee that might include some key community members? Um who either have experience in that kind of fundraising, like that kind of um development and fundraising. Um and or connections um to philanthropists, so to speak, who have deeper pockets and or corporate pockets.
Yeah, our goal would be to develop more of a committee structure if we got to that point. Um I think the first step is, are are we gonna move forward? And then, okay, here's the secondary piece of, now we do some fundraising to pick up that extra delta. Yeah, good, good suggestion.
I mean, for me, it would be reassuring to know that we were pretty far down that fundraising path. Because then it's easier to say yes to these presentations. If we say yes. It'd be, or we have a clear vision of exactly how it's gonna be funded and what that delta is, it makes it harder frankly to get to yes.
Did I, did I hear you were gonna share that?
And I, I don't wanna chair it, but I'd be happy to participate. I mean, I, I think there are, there are folks who have ideas about this. So I'm just suggesting, don't do it in a vacuum. Leverage the support and ideas and innovative concepts that might be out there in the community. Um, one other question, just in ter- and and this may be too granular, would be maybe too far out, but assuming. We had a track down here in front, there's a lot of conversation about our goal of allowing the community to use it. And to leverage it. The taxpayers in this community are paying for it, so let's let them use it. With that in mind though. There are, there are potentially minor issues in terms of, is it gonna be fenced and blocked? At certain times of the day or night um to protect it, so to speak. So it's a significant investment. Um we want folks to use it, but it can probably be a free for all. There's too much risk. Of damage and um that kind of stuff. So any thoughts or ideas at this early juncture in that regard?
Yeah, we we've thought about that. One of the key pieces is to make sure that this is open to the community. That's a high priority for us. Um so. Making sure that it we, we uh block any kind of car traffic that could come on and damage it would be a priority. Uh but that footpath coming over, the community to be able to walk on it like they do now. That way we would wanna keep similar, similar vein of allowing that community use before, after, school time.
Okay, so no fence?
No fence. We're not looking to put a big fence in the, I know some schools, when they put a track, will fence the whole thing off, lock it and not o- open it to community. That is not the approach that we're looking to take. I I think personally, from my perspective, I think we should leave this open as a community asset.
We're pretty fortunate that there's only one entry point in there. I mean, unless you're going down a big hill to get the gun.
So some next steps, just to kind of wrap this conversation up. First, uh it's a lot. Um and there's a lot of unknowns at this point, but we wanted to make sure that we let you as a board know what was happening. Uh as well as the community, because this is, we wanna be as transparent as possible with this process. There's been a lot of conversations that have happened behind the scenes to get to this point. I know there's a lot of buzz in the community about this. Um a lot of different opinions on that, but ultimately, our goal is to make sure everyone is open to this. That we provide that open forum like this to ask questions. Um so some next steps. We will have that meeting with the D E P Conservation District. Uh this Thursday. That's really gonna set a pathway and provide a lot more knowns in terms of the direction. Uh and in terms of cost, as Mr. Sellers uh explained this evening. Once we have that, we'll be able to come back to the board. Um aggressively, if we can come back to the board with some uh numbers as Mr. Hefner outlined um earlier. That would be our goal for the December meeting. The Building Construction Committee has talked about that. That was kind of the initial goal. I think some of the uh, the limiting factors may be what happens in that meeting Thursday, so we may have to delay that a little bit, but within the next few weeks. Month or two, we'll be able to revisit this and provide some clear distinct uh figures that would go along with. Uh the cost, assuming that it is still plausible to be able to do it uh within, within the facility here. Okay, so we'll absolutely let the the board know. Any major significant milestones, we'll also ensure that the public is well aware of those next steps. Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving on with the agenda, Board of Directors' report. Can I get a motion in a second? So uh under the Board of Directors' report this evening, we have uh first to uh approve the minute, meeting minutes from the October third meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to those meeting minutes? Okay, um we also have the approval of some first reading policies. There's two I'd like to just bring the board's attention to, so you're you're aware of what's uh these policy changes are. Uh the first one is uh policy one oh nine, this pertains to our resource materials. So the board approves the curriculum. The board approves the textbooks. You heard about resources, uh materials from Dr. Hoyt this evening. Uh res- resource materials are the supplemental materials that are often, that are approved by the superintendent. That doesn't necessarily reach the board level. Uh um but what has happened in the past and what has happened in a lot of school districts is there's a lot of buzz and controversy about resource materials. So we worked with Mr. Pratt, our solicitor, to start evaluating, what does our policy look like? And let's restructure that to make sure that we have some clear distinct safeguards in place. If something would happen, if there's uh some questions about materials, how are we gonna handle that? And so that's really what this policy does. It outlines. Uh w- w- what are resource materials and what's the process of selecting the materials? There's a uh third section of who's responsible for selecting the materials. And then there's a uh and also a section of very tail end this policy that talks about. If we're gonna evaluate poli- if we're gonna evaluate resource materials and if something's challenged, what is that process to challenge a material? Uh and then finally, there's the the final kind of stance that says, ultimately, you as the board are the ones responsible uh for materials. And uh whether that's textbooks or that's resource materials, so that final decision ultimately does uh fall with the school board. And that that is kind of the final safeguard check to this whole entire policy. So that that policy is uh up for review. We'll look at that again next month, but I just wanted to bring some attention to that because that one has a little bit more weight to it. Uh in the light of some of the con- conversations that are happening, uh particularly in some other school districts.
So, Mr. Potager, are you recommending any changes or is this the historic policy and you're just bringing it to the forefront, given what's going on in the market?
I'm sorry, I should have probably more clearly defined it. Our first policy was very streamlined. This is a full rewrite.
Okay, so.
So there's no like edits or anything. This is a full brand new policy.
Okay. In terms of what's changed, can we get a, I I mean, I know it's available. Yeah, it might be helpful so that we know where we are and where you're asking us to go.
The the first poli- the old policy, the existing policy, is about two or three paragraphs. It's very streamlined. It's the P S B A recommended policy.
Okay.
Uh there's not a lot of meat to it. Uh and so again, working with our solicitor, we we came up with this recommended policy. That more clearly defines the processes. But we can provide the old policy, just so you can see the difference.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh the other policy that I just wanna bring your attention to, uh this is more like the nuts and bolts of operations on, if you have children, you probably have encountered this. This is the uh attendance policy. It is a policy two oh four. If you go to page four of that, there's a news, a new. Uh section in there. Uh there are ten days for lawful absences. Lawful absences could be. Your child's sick, it could be an education travel, it could be all kinds of other things. What we clearly defined in that policy now. Is absences for bereavement, for college visits, for education travel, or religious holidays will not be included in that cumulative ten day total. Uh particularly what was happening with education travel was uh families were almost scapegoating the education travel and just saying, I'm just gonna sign up. Sign my kid out uh and and just basically not do the education travel and and just take advantage of the ten days. So. We we put this in place to say, here's our policy, ten days out before they become unlawful absences. Uh which then turned into more court situations, intruency situations. We're, we're not gonna go there for education travel days or or bereavement days. That, that's gonna be taken out of that ten day total. That way, if um your child is really sick, uh and you end up went, winning on a education travel to begin his school year. We're, we're not gonna count that against you. So it's, it's more a little, a lenient policy to support families and students. Makes sense? Those are the policies I wanted to address this evening. No major uh additions or corrections to the other policies. There's, there's. W- uh a little bit of change to eight thirteen. That pertains to uh other insurance, particularly the. Uh Cobra Insurance that has to be offered to an employee. Uh there's some changes to that on eight thirteen, but nothing too significant. Uh that is the items that are in the Board of Directors' report. Thank you, sir. Uh committee reports. Thank you, sir. Uh, committee reports, B C I U, Mrs. Hune.
Oh, good evening, I submitted a written report, which I believe is uh, linked from the agenda. I don't have anything um, particular to highlight this month.
Thank you. B C T C, Mr. Sheets.
J O C Manon, ten twenty-six at the East Campus, only reliable note was, uh, we currently have uh. Convenient to nominate a committee for the Chair and Vice Chair. Uh, next meeting will be December fifteenth, we traditionally do not have a November meeting due to a conflict or non-occurs because of Thanksgiving. So the next meeting will be on twelve fifteen twenty-two at the West Campus, this concludes our report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Burks Earned Income Tax, Mr. Gu- Guerico.
Yes, I have nothing to report, the next meeting is Thursday, December fifteenth.
Thank you. Cola, Mrs. Wallizer?
Uh, yes, we are meeting tomorrow virtually and it will be.
P S B A.
There it is, sorry, I was like, I can't think of the acronym, P S B A is going to be um, giving the presentation.
Thank you, the floor is still yours for Policy Committee.
Uh, Mr. Potener has gone over, well, he'll go over it.
Um, Strategic Planning.
Thank you.
Okay, Negotiations Committee. It's now, it's now yours, okay, alright. Building Construction Committee.
I think we heard this this evening.
Yeah, I think so. Alright, uh, any other board discussion? Hearing none, can I get a roll call please?
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hohenchill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Rorin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Wagaman?
Yes.
Nine yeas, motion passes.
Alright, uh, Business and Operations Report, can I get a motion in a second?
Motion, I respect it.
Yes, in the beginning of the report, we have the bills through this evening. Um, we have general fund, food service, construction and capital reserve, I don't know if anybody has questions that were not previously answered. Um, and then item E, we have the financial reports uh, for each fund as well, as well as the investment. Schedule and the Student Activity and Trust Report with no budget transfers this month. Uh, item F, we have the Special Education, we have a M O U between. The district and the Burks County Children and Youth, uh, to ensure educational stability of foster care youth. Uh, this is a E S S A requirement related to transportation. Um, and this agreement will go into effect January and continue through January of two thousand and twenty-six as attached. Uh, item H, uh, this is something, an initiative that we had discussed internally. Um, to approve the purchase of T-shirts and sweatshirts, uh, to clearly identify support staff during working hours. Um, this is one to, one identify them, but also, um, if somebody's looking for them, but also provide them. Apparel so they're not using their own items that may get worn uh, or destroyed while they're working. Um, item I, this is recurring, this is something we do throughout the year. Uh, we do it also initially before the beginning of the school year, this is the update to the Brandywine Transportation, uh, roster of current drivers. Um, item J, this is a renewal, um, there are no changes from the prior one, this is for our life. Our long-term disability and life insurance, uh, there is no change um, as attached. And then item K is, this is something that is required as a result of Governor Wolf signing Act fifty-seven to two thousand and twenty-two. Um, this is amending the local tax collection law. It is the Act fifty-seven waiver exempting qualified taxpayers from additional charges for real estate taxes. Uh, when they fail to receive a tax notice. Now, I believe these, this is for individuals that have bought a property within the first year and they do not. Receive their tax bill or they claim to not have received it, um, this is essentially waiving any fees, interest or other charges, but it does not. Waive the requirement for them to pay the tax bill, it also uh, does not. It also doesn't allow them to receive the discount, so they have to pay face value, um, so that's, you know, required that we have to approve that. So that's all I have.
What, what are those taxes usually take?
Those taxes usually included in the, in the uh, when the home is sold and they go through the process of, they have to collect the taxes ahead.
For, for the current fiscal year they're in, so say they buy a house, March. They will pay everything from March through June.
Right.
Um, and then the homeowner who previously paid will get a refund. Now come July one. You know, say if the information wasn't relayed or if they say they didn't receive it, when July one, when that tax bill goes out, if they claim to have not received it, that's when, you know. They miss the, they fall into the penalty, which is November, December, and then eventually you can, you know. Send it to the county as delinquent come January first, so that, that's where this is talking about, I guess the first full year, essentially.
I, I think it's sort of, well, doesn't matter what I think.
I mean, uh, uh, it doesn't happen often, um, I'd say maybe once in my experience. Yeah, so we, we do get monthly reports of updates, um, obviously we get the transfer tax report. Um, but also, you know, if it goes to, if you have a mortgage, we do get the information of, you know, the address on file to where the tax bill should be sent. Um, but believe it or not, people still say here and there that they did not get it.
Okay, and it does happen.
It does hap- yeah, in, in different counties have different.
Ways of handling those transfer taxes, isn't it?
Yeah.
It does happen, as silly as that sounds, it, it happens more often. More often than you would think it should, so.
Mr. Wagaman, I have one quick follow-up question and I wanted to um, uh, thank you all, I did submit a couple of questions about the checkbook register. Um, which you got back to me in advance of the meeting, so thank you for that quick response, just one quick follow-up. Um, so there's some uh, charges for tutoring. Um, to a company called Learn Well, and uh, if I understand the answer correctly, this was for. A student or a variety of students who needed to get tutored while they had a hospital stay. I'm just curious, um, we have homebound instructors that we've approved historically. With a wage rate, and I was curious why we were not able to use our own sort of pre-approved homebound instructors for that purpose.
Yes, so, I would, I would say, and Mandy can chime in as well, but also, I would say the ones that. We had recently paid, um, I mean, they might be placed in Philadelphia, they might be placed in Delaware, like they're not locally placed. Um, so, you know, obviously the time and travel and effort to get there, you know, it's cost prohibitive, so I think.
Terrific, thank you.
Can I get a roll call please?
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hohenchill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Wagaman?
Yes.
Nine yeas, motion passes.
Alright, Superintendent's, Superintendent's Report, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, Eisenhardt.
Thank you, uh, three items under the Superintendent Report this evening, the first one is to uh, create a scholarship for Mary Ann Almondinger. If you recall from last school board meeting in October, we did a uh, we recognized Mrs. Almondinger and. Read an obituary minute as a former teacher of the school district, so the family is looking to set up a scholarship at this point. And so we would ask the board to consider that, that development of the scholarship. Uh, item B is for myself to attend the uh, uh, Petancy Conference, uh, that is held annually, it's the. Education Technology Conference, uh, it was typically held over out in the Harrisburg Hershey area, this year they're switching locations. Uh, to the Kalahari Resort up in the Poconos. Uh, my, my intention would be to go up one, one day, uh, February fourteenth, uh, to attend that at, at a hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and then item C would be to approve uh, a revi- a revision to the calendar for this school year. Uh, and I apologize for this, but when we developed the calendar, the Friday of conferences, which is November eighteenth. We have conferences listed for the elementary and intermediate school, but not for the middle school and high school. So this is twofold, one that creates some parity in terms of the availability for conferences for families, but two, knowing that um. Some of our older students also help to uh, watch their younger siblings when they're uh, at home. It creates a little bit of that uh, support structure for families at the same time, so. My ask is to adjust the calendar and open Friday, November eighteenth for parent-teacher conferences. To be able to uh, create that opportunity, um, we will closely monitor that data and see how many families. In the middle school and high school attend conferences on Thursdays or, or on Friday, as well as the other three days. And then next year, if it seems like it was not beneficial in terms of the amount of time used for that half day. Uh, we will look to restructure the calendar next year accordingly.
Would it be February fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three?
Say that again?
Uh, letter B, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
It would be, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Wrightnower made a very nice catch, uh, item B, the date for that uh, Petancy Conference should be February fourteenth. So not twenty twenty-two, but twenty twenty-three, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, can I get a roll call please?
Mr. Hohenchill? Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagaman?
Yes.
Nine yeas, motion passes.
Alright, Personnel Report, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Second, Eisenhardt.
So a couple items on the Personnel Report I'd like to bring to the board's attention, uh, the first one is uh. Some resignations that uh, I want to uh, talk about this evening, um, there is number one and number two go correspond with each other. It is a uh, a golf coach, there was some issues with Pezers, and so we had to adjust some dates uh, within the resignation letter, and that's why there's. Two different resignations in there, Pezers created the big issue for, for this individual, and so. We had to adjust some, uh, the date of when it, the resignation was to be able to accommodate that. Uh, item three is the retirement of Mr. Gary Gordon, uh, if anyone knows Mr. Gordon. We will have an opportunity to recognize him at a future board meeting, but the patience of the saint, uh, is an amazing instructor and a gifted musician, so. He will be a absolutely tremendous loss to this school district, to all the kids that have ever learned from him. Uh, he takes a student that has never touched an instrument and then has a concert by the spring, I, I don't know how he does it. And a pretty good one, um, so that is going to be a huge loss, he has uh, from what I understand, forty years of teaching with him. So that, that is pretty awesome, pretty awesome career. So that's a celebration for Mr. Gordon, uh, unfortunately, uh, number four, we have the resignation of, of Ms. Aguerico as our business manager, uh. Nicole has been such an awesome leader for us and it will be a tremendous loss. Uh, for the school district, for the working relationship with this board, uh, and for me personally, uh, and so. We do wish her the best luck as she goes into the next part of her professional career and. Uh, as a school district, we will work through that, that transition process. Uh, the board and the, the administration have been taught, having conversations about transition plans. And ensuring that uh, financially that we are in a good, solid state as we have to make that transition, Nicole will be with us. Until the end of December, uh, December twenty-third, and then we will look to make some uh, signi- uh, some changes, hopefully we'll have a new person in place by that point. Uh, if not, we'll, we'll work on some, we are working on contingency plans to be able to have a backup for, for the school district. Thank you, Nicole, for all your services. Um, we have a few resignations from uh, staff, they're not going to be continuing with us as athletic coaches, that's the final resignation there, we have a few appointments. We're excited to announce uh, and invite uh, Ms. Taylor Swiger to join the Brandywine team, she is going to be the administrative assistant working with. Miss Sarah Sofa, uh, sorry, Mrs. Sarah Conrad, thank you, um, recently married as of last weekend. Uh, two weekends ago now, right? Sorry, two weekends ago, uh, and so this position will be a twelve-month position, uh, backfilling. The position that uh, Sarah had previously, uh, the effective start date for that would be January third. Uh, then we have some co-curricular appointments for uh, winter athletic coach recommendations, we have athletic uh, event staff. And we have paid instructional, non-athletic co-curricular positions, just want to bring your attention to one in particular. As we look at the winter coaches uh, positions, there are. Some openings that are still in, on that list, particularly with the middle school, as of this morning, a lot of those were uh. Updated and filled, and so they didn't get to meet and hit the agenda for tonight because it was last minute this morning. Uh, but we will, the only position we have open right now is the middle school boys' basketball. So if anyone in the audience is interested in coaching middle school boys' basketball, please talk with Mrs. Conrad. Uh, we will be gladly accepting applicants for that position, but really some great work from Mrs. Conrad to recruit and. Uh, fill a lot of those voids that were in there previously. Uh, and then finally, we have a re- a recommendation to adjust the Support Staff Handbook and the Manager-Employee Handbook. The Support Staff Handbook and Manager Handbook have a, a clause in there for retirement. Uh, and the previous clause for the retirement was that they had to give notification by January first. Uh, unfortunately with our support staff, they don't necessarily follow a typical professional employee. Retirement plan where they would retire at, at June, June thirtieth timeline, and so we're asking to adjust that and a little, be a little bit more. Uh, flexible with the support staff, uh, and then we would have a s- uh, intent, a notice of intent to retire. Within sixty days of that retirement date, instead of the January, the January one date. Uh, and so that's, that's the request there to adjust that, that language. Any other, any questions?
Quick uh, follow-up question on four C, um, the co-curricular, non-athletic um, advisors sheet. I'm looking for a total of the stipend column, so that we have an idea. What our total spend as a district is for the grouping of th- these positions. So I think there was a little bit of a, I haven't been clear with my request. Um, so I understand that certain positions have multiple people in their split, I totally get that, what I'm looking for is a total at the bottom of the page.
Fair enough, that's easy.
Fifty, sixty, seventy grand?
Yep.
And where does that funding come from? So I think it's important, um, if this is a handout for us and the public to see. That we recognize that um, the uh, W H Y after school, after middle school, um. I'm sorry, after-school program here at the middle school is actually funded from outside the district, I get that. We pay it and then we get reimbursed, but the gist is it's not a district cost, the Brandywine Education Association has been um, terrific enough to fund that.
Yep, we can add that, uh, and we will reflect that at the December meeting.
Okay, and I think it's also important that folks understand that this board doesn't determine these salary amounts. The board takes that pot of money, which is why I'm asking for the total, what is the pot worth? And we hand that over to the collective bargaining unit uh, team. And then those folks work amongst themselves to carve up those dollars and allocate them to each of these positions. That's very different than sort of the way we allocate who gets paid what around here. So normally the board decides this stuff, and so I think it's important to just footnote on this document to make it clear that that, that's not a board decision. That the po- the amount of the pot of money is a board decision, but the allocation of that money amongst all these people in these roles is not a board decision.
Any other questions?
Uh, who's the coach for the girls' basketball team in middle school now?
Uh, Mrs. Conrad, uh, the coach, the question was, who's the coach for the middle school? Did you say girls? Other questions? Can I get a roll call please?
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightnower?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Mr. Stupits?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hohenchill?
Yes.
Mr. Wagaman?
Yes.
Nine yeas, motion passes.
Thank you, is there any additional public comment?
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, uh, the sidewalk project, can we have an update on that?
So the question was uh, relative to the sidewalk project, that is a, a Topten uh, project, that Topten received a grant in working with Penn Dot. Uh, we actually were invited to, today, we're invited to a meeting to attend. Uh, uh, Monday at ten thirty, uh, so I can provide the board some updates with that project uh, at that point, um. The concern for us and, and the reason we've been asked as a community partner and stakeholder is, we have a lot of students walking back and forth obviously to the school. And the concern for us right now is the sidewalk is blocked, and so community members, students, families have to walk into the street to, to get around.
My biggest question, who's liable, us or the borough? If something out of the ordinary would happen?
Don't have the answer to that.
Don't know where, where, where we're gonna be talking, is it in school?
The end of our, yeah, it's the end of our property.
There's no, the liability being limited, if anything. Because there's cer- only certain reasons that you can sue a school district and Topten doing the constructions. It's partly marked, so people have to take the assumption by walking on that area.
I got a, you, you sent out an email a couple of weeks ago about retesting. And I uh, believe I read somewhere that there was a couple of twelfth-grade teachers that were on line, our students do uh, do that. Was that resolved?
So the, the question was pertaining to uh, retesting, ensuring that all our staff are allowing retesting to occur.
Yes, conversations were held. Okay, so that was resolved?
That was resolved, yes.
Uh, uh, bus GPS, how close are we that we can actually track them on our phone?
So the uh, track for innovative, for parents?
Yeah.
Uh, at this point, the conversation has been trying to get the GPS to set up on the buses and the vans. Uh, we haven't taken that next step to add it for the parents yet, that would be the, the next step. The next logical step, but we haven't went down that road yet, there was, there was some hesitation from the transportation company to allow that. Um, I think it's a good benefit, particularly with all the challenges that we've had, and kind of ex- have expressed that to the transportation company. That if we're gonna have inconsistencies, that we're gonna have, but late buses because of issues with drivers, then we need to make sure parents are equipped with being able to know when their kids are getting home, so. I'm working on that, um, but I don't have a timeline on that, there is net added cost to do that, it's not exorbitant, but there is an added cost. Uh, we talked about that in the budget process last year, right now, the priority is just to get that turn-by-turn direction for the bus drivers on the bus right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I do need to announce somebody in the executive session prior to the meeting, we'll have one. Well, um, can I get a motion in a second for adjournment? Thank you, everyone, very much.